So what we wanted to do today is just take a few minutes initially. So in preparation for our upcoming retreat, we are going to be taking the WASDA self-assessment. And we want to do that in the spring of every year and then discuss it at the retreat. Now, there were some questions last year when we were going through that WASDA self-assessment on what is the standard that we are supposed to be grading ourselves against. And that's what we have here. We have the Washington State or Washington School Board standards. And this was developed by WASDA back in the 2009 timeframe. And these are the standards that that self-assessment aligns to. So we're not going to spend a lot of time going through this today. But I would encourage you, if you get a chance, just glance through this because that self-assessment, you're going to send that out, I think, in the next couple of days, right?
Yeah.
And the idea is that we have that done before. So we're going to have to take that sometime between now and the end of next week so we can get that to WASDA and get our results back for our retreat. So these are the standards. You can see the, there's five core principles that they go over. And then within each of those principles, there are some benchmarks and then there are some indicators. So just as you're taking that, if you have any questions as to what this question means or what it's referring to, take this with you and you can refer back to this so that you have a better idea of what that, what the objective is that we're trying to meet. I know I had some questions on that last time we did this, and so we wanted to get this information to you. All right. Is there any questions on that? So just a little bit about our retreat next week. We were, we were hoping to be able to take that time and kind of go over some goals, not next week, sorry. Yeah, the following week, two weeks from tonight will be, you know, to kind of go over some goals as a district or as a board and talk about some of our norms and things. But we got ahold of Thomas Alsberry, hoping that he could come in and help us with that. Well, it turns out he's not available that night. So we're going to post, rather than try and go through that and then have him come back in and help us do something different, we're going to postpone that exercise a little bit later. In our retreat, we will be going over the self-assessment. We do want to talk about that and just get everybody's feedback on that. And then we want to talk a little bit about the board calendar. What do they call the work?
Annual work.
Annual work, yeah, annual work calendar. So those will be the two things that we go over that night. So rather than starting like at 1:00 or 1:30 in the afternoon, as we talked about previously, we're going to start at 4 o'clock. I don't think it'll take that long to go through those things. We should be done, we don't want to rush it, we should be done by 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock, earlier than a normal board meeting. However, what that does mean is that we will have to take some time for Mr. Alsberry sometime between now and probably summertime, as soon as we can get him lined up where everybody has enough time that we can go through his, his program. Okay? Will we be able to do that in a study session or an earlier study session like 4:00 to 6:00 or something like that?
Yeah, so he would really like, he would do a three-hour session with you. He would really like four hours.
Okay.
So I think we could accommodate that in a variety of different ways. And then he's fairly local, so I just need to get ahold of him. We just need to align dates.
Okay. Yeah, we can talk about that, different options. We'll talk about that with Michelle. Yeah, I, our goal was to do it in this retreat so that we didn't have, and we wanted, we want to be able to set aside blocks of time where we can do the things that we need to do without being constrained by an hour or two, so. But hopefully between now and the end of June, we can get together with him and then we'll, we'll set some board norms and some goals. And he's got a program process that helps us identify some of those things that we want to accomplish as a board, so.
Yeah.
Okay? So we just talked about these standards for the upcoming, and you're familiar with them.
Yeah.
All right. So any questions on this, on our retreat? Are you ready to?
I am.
Talk about AVID?
Sure.
So the rest of our study session today, we've got Michelle who's going to talk about our annual objectives. And I think we've identified AVID as one of the key things that we want to focus on. So Michelle's going to talk to us about that.
Sure. So thank you for the opportunity to visit with you a little bit. I did want to just call your attention, we talked about our district annual objectives at our board retreat in November, so on November 27th. So just by way of background and reminder, we started the whole, there's like a little spider or something right there. We started the whole process of really looking at what were the board's most critical interests and the things were bubbling to the surface for you in terms of our next focus. We started talking about those things in a study session where we did a gigantic brainstorm, and that was in August. And then we took that, the big brainstorm, and we narrowed that down in August, on August 28th, and started to kind of clarify and narrow the board's focus. And I was, I was given that direction. I then distilled that down to really the bulleted items that are highlighted there on the box under September 25th. And it, and the things that you as a board had been interested in and talking about really fell under these broad categories, that looking for personalized learning, where every kid is getting what they need in a plan that aligns with their goal and their hope and dream for themselves, that we were having high academic expectations and supporting kids with their most rigorous course of instruction, that we were having opportunities for kids to be individually enhanced, whether that was acceleration for kids that needed to get up to standard and the beyond, or extension for those kids had already mastered the standard and that needed pushed beyond that. So you all went to WASDA, and then on the 27th of November, we had a WAS, or you did your WASDA debrief. And lots of the sessions that you went to, really the things that you were interested in fell into those broad categories. So on the 27th, there was an opportunity for you guys to talk as a board and for us as district staff to try to connect the dots between the things that have been most interesting to you or the things that you had the broadest interest in into a singular initiative. So we wanted to try to choose something that, that would get us to those high academic expectations and that personalized, personalized learning, where we were focused on that foundational experience for all Pasco kids, which really has to do with our priority standards and pacing, delivering our core content in a way that's research-based and aligned, and that we were focused on transitions from grade to grade. Those are some of the key ideas that you guys talked about prior to, starting in August and then through that August, September, and then into November. You talked about individualized enhancements, really focusing again on every student getting what they need from the system, whether that is acceleration because kids need additional academic time to meet standard, or for our students who have already met the standard, how do we extend them above and beyond. You also talked about and focused on this year and even previous years, how we systematically identify and provide access to the most rigorous courses of studies for individualized students. And I think you as a board have gotten some information around our approach for nominating or identifying students for our highly capable program is vastly different this year than it's been in the past. We did a targeted data dive. We proactively invited students whose data was aligning with those students that we had seen be successful versus in the past, it's we would advertise and ask teachers and parents to nominate students. So we did that. And in addition, we proactively identified students whose data looked like they could also be successful and targeted invitations to those students. So that increased drastically the number of students that we had. We went from a few hundred students that were identified as being potentially taking advantage of highly capable to 1,200 students, 364 of which were Spanish-speaking students. Whereas before, we would have like a classroom or two of Spanish-speaking students. So those students were invited to participate. Now, not every student is going to participate, but certainly the idea is that we would target those invitations to make sure that we were providing access to students to those most rigorous course of study. You've been very interested in student engagement, making sure that every student has an opportunity to plan for their future, that students and parents can engage in academic dialogue. There's, you have had an interest in expanding internship opportunities and for students to understand that there's multiple pathways through our system and for us to create those and advertise those so that our students can maximize their school experience. So when you take all of that and you say, and we want to narrow the focus and really ask you as a board to help us champion a singular initiative, AVID checks, checks all those boxes. Dr. Steve Webb, who's one of our Washington State award-winning superintendents, is quoted here as expressing his pride in being associated with AVID and really understanding that it's a critical piece when you're looking at a whole systems approach to transforming student trajectory. So I think the words spoken here by Dr. Webb certainly align with the philosophy of Pasco School District and our vision and mission and things that you have heard us say over the last two and a half years. AVID clearly aligns with our outrageous outcomes and our 100% goals, especially focused on graduation, but really even that trajectory from learning to read by third grade, you know, having mass success by ninth grade, et cetera. In order for AVID to work and be aligned, you have to have a framework of curriculum that's in place and being implemented across your system, which for us are the Pasco Curriculum Guides. You have to have a core instructional focus. You have to have that diamond of instruction which allows access to the core content but has interventions on either side of that, from core to the most rigorous course of study or core to your most restrictive special education environment. It requires or encourages people to work in professional learning communities and teachers learning from one another. And it really is built on a foundation of relationships where every student is known by name, strength, and need. So like I said, AVID checked all of those boxes. These are our current AVID schools. Our AVID elementary schools are listed there. Our middle schools are, are schools that have had the most longevity with AVID. They've, they implemented AVID when I was there, which was now starting to be a really, really long time ago. And then our high schools, Chihuahua and New Horizons, are both currently implementing. So here's the commitment I made to you in November, is that from January to July, we would start to support our current AVID schools, which what we call moving along a continuum of implementation. So the, one of the really great things about AVID is they have these great foundational tools that we can use as an organization and they require you to use that helps guide implementation. And you monitor your implementation annually up against this rubric and criteria. So Shelley Hatch has been working with our schools that are current AVID sites, making sure that they are continuing to move along the, the continuum. And then it's very data-driven. We collect data on the AVID students and we send that into AVID Center every year. A couple of things that that does is it ensures to AVID Center that we're off, that we're implementing their program with fidelity, but also is a, is a layer of accountability so that we don't lose sight of those things that make AVID a strong program. By the end of June, the beginning of July, we will survey interest for our non-AVID schools. We have lots of anecdotal interests from our principals that aren't, that are currently non-AVID schools wanting to implement. But what we'll be doing in the survey is really talking about kind of readiness to benefit and where's the buy-in and kind of the groundswell of teacher interest. And we're inviting you as boards to join us in championing the program. And we're going to provide some training and school visitations and site presentations that I'll talk about here in more detail in just a second. And then starting in August through December, we're going to continue to support again those current AVID schools onboard any new sites and then engage our non-AVID schools in conversations about their interest in becoming AVID schools. And again, invite you as board members to help us champion this initiative. So for us, that cycle of supporting those that are ready to, to implement and on, and surveying interest of those that aren't quite ready and onboarding the ones that are just coming on, that cycle for us will be the focus of a three- to five-year plan. And the philosophy is what we want to do in that cycle of surveying interest, supporting, et cetera, is really building a firm basis of buy-in and support so that the teachers and the students are owning the program as part of their culture and who they are. It's the difference between compliance and commitment. So for us, that's a really important piece of how we want to go at this work. So while your district annual objective that you've identified as a January-to-January endeavor, certainly you as a board would be, you know, you could identify it again as an annual objective, but as a district, we have a responsibility to you to look longer than just year to year. So one of the things that, because, and I, and I love this quote, "Preparing America's students to be successful in college and career takes courageous leadership at every level and that challenges students to achieve." So for us to do that and for us to have the leadership courage to do that, it can't just be a one-and-done, like a one-years focus. It has to be a system-wide effort with a continuous kind of cycle of looking for readiness to benefit, helping implement and supporting, and then creating opportunities for those that aren't quite ready to, to jump on the AVID train, to get ready to jump on the AVID train. So our goal would be to have a three-to-five-year plan that would focus on 100% implementation at the end of that three to five years. So in front of you, to kind of drill down into the details, you have a document that is in our regular kind of annual district objective format. And it's, and you can see, there's really two broad parts. There's AVID advancement via individual determination, that's what AVID stands for. And there's a systems element to that. And that's for us as a district to have some foundational systems in place to support implement, an implementation cycle and a sustainability cycle. So in August, matter of fact, it's already scheduled, Shelley Hatch will be in front of you on August 13th, where she will present a three-to-five-year sustainability and expansion plan. So as we're looking into next year, we have some budget adjustments to make, but even in the face of those budget adjustments, we believe we'll be able to expand this program or, and/or at least sustain what we have. And then in years two, three, four, and five, continue to onboard and bring more schools onboard. So we'll be looking at not only how do, how do we continue to support the schools we have, how do we build in budget capacity over the next three to five years to bring on the schools that want to come onboard to the point then that we have 100% implementation? So you'll get a presentation from Shelley Hatch on August 13th that again will have that comprehensive three-to-five-year plan with key actions and budget identified, which again, I think that budget sustainability over the course of a, a program implementation is really important. The other two pieces have to do with that cycle of implementation I talked about. We'll be surveying those non-AVID schools to see, you know, are they ready? I mean, it's one thing as a school principal to say, "I want my school to do it." And another thing as a whole school system to have deep teacher buy-in and interest from students to want to participate. And so what we'd be looking for are those schools that have that readiness to benefit not only at the principal level, but at the teacher and student level as well. Those would be the schools we would prioritize to bring on kind of first, and then preparing our other schools over that three to five years to bring them onboard as well. And again, you know, we would support our current sites. AVID Center has a very nice tool for us again to use in that continuum to make sure that we're always kind of knowing where we are and what's that next place we need to push along the continuum on all of the components that make AVID a, a high-quality program. And then as we're bringing on new sites, again, the support for a brand-new site looks a little different than those sites where you're moving along the continuum, but we would be working on those pieces as a system. So the place where we would interface with you is where I, the second part of that that talks about the AVID Board Champions, and we would want to be doing some training with you, starting in October, we would do some board awareness around the difference between AVID school-wide and the AVID elective. And I think that's one of the pieces that got called out very clearly when we first initiated this conversation about the district objective, is I think most people are very familiar with the AVID elective that's been at the middle school forever and ever. There's this concept of AVID school-wide that's not as familiar to all of us and as a district, we haven't been as focused on and is very, very powerful because it creates that, that college and career kind of what is my hope and dream for the future? How do I plan for that, that culture across the school? And that very much aligns with what you as a board have been expressing in wanting to have students who are, who are ready to deeply plan around what their future looks like, not end valuing college and career, whatever that hope or dream is for students, we value that equally and that we have a responsibility to prepare them. So that would be the focus of the October meeting would, or October training would be to help differentiate between the AVID school-wide and AVID elective. There, I put on here, and this is just something for you to consider as a board, that might be kind of fun and interesting. So we often travel to WASDA. This next year in November, it'll be in Bellevue. Well, there's lots of AVID sites around the Seattle area. So what might be of interest to the board is Shelley could work with AVID Center and identify a couple of schools for us to go and visit. So we could get AVID schools, so that we could get a sense of what does AVID look like in other school districts? So something for you to consider, it's not a have-to, but it's an offer. We would be happy to reach out to schools in Seattle to have you go for a visit. We could either do it up against WASDA and/or the Ledge Conference, one or both, but taking advantage of times when we're already traveling to other places to go and interface and network with other school districts might be really a fun thing for us to do together and very, very informative. We also then are inviting our current or schools that are implementing in Pasco to a study session in December, and we're calling it an AVID, Pasco School District, like an AVID site showcase, where you can hear directly from AVID teachers, principals, et cetera, about what AVID means and their buildings and what that looks like. And then you can see in May, I know this is beyond the, kind of the cycle of the January to January, but one of our, one of our middle schools, McLaughlin Middle School, is, is exploring the concept of becoming a demonstration site. So to be, be able to be an AVID demonstration site, you have to meet some very robust criteria. And they feel like they're ready to take on that kind of certification process, so they're going to be working on that over next school year. So we thought that might be a fun thing to do as kind of a wrap-up in May at the end of the school year, to have them come back to you and talk about their journey as an AVID demonstration site. So the goal would be for Pasco School District to have a demonstration site right here in Pasco. And you might wonder, well, what's, what's the benefit of that? Well, you get really clean and clear in your AVID practices as a school site because, you know, that becomes the focus. So you're, you're really targeting the AVID practices. And then people from all over the country come and look for AVID demonstration sites to come and, if they're thinking about implementing AVID, it would be very similar to what we're going to do when we go to Seattle. We could reach out to an AVID demonstration site and go there. I've had the opportunity to go to many AVID demonstration sites, and I think one of the most powerful parts of an AVID demonstration site is the tours are often student-run and-led. It's not an adult-run and-led day, so you get to hear from the students, which I always think is really, really powerful. I think when a student can articulate to you the intention and the philosophy of a program and apply it to their own lives and how it's made a difference from them, it's a, you, you know you're getting it right when your kids can articulate the, the, kind of the meat in the heart of a program. So that would be our goal for McLaughlin Middle School. Now, that's their thinking at this point, you know, depending on kind of priorities could shift and change. So if that changes, we'll let you know. But if they choose to go down that journey, we would want to invite you to do that with them as a board. So at this point, that is a very super rough draft. I'm completely open to feedback from you as board members. My goal would be to get some feedback from you about what's missing from this plan that you hoped you would see, if you, and add that and then bring this back to you for approval. By policy, it doesn't have to be approved until the, like the, has to be approved before the first day of school. So we have some time, but I thought that the sooner the better, like why not? So I am absolutely open to feedback in whatever discussion you as a board would like to have.
Okay, so thank you, Mrs. Whitney. So this, these, this plan is our annual objectives for the, well, I guess January to January. We're already in it. So is there any questions, any discussion on any of these items?
Can you put the list back up there of the elementary schools?
Sure.
How many, do they have a lot of schools nationwide that are, that are AVID schools clear throughout and not just, you know, that, what did you call the difference, school-wide versus elective? So.
I don't know the number, but that's, to be like an AVID demonstration site, you need to be a school-wide site. So any of the AVID demonstration sites will be school-wide. So if you are only doing just the AVID elective, you're really only doing just a portion of the program. I don't know how many AVID demonstration sites they have, but I could absolutely find out.
This is a huge undertaking because going from an elective to school-wide is training really 2,000 employees because you really have to train your parents and your, and your teachers in this program. So this is a huge lift. I can see why it takes three to five years. And I see that we have, you know, we have two high schools. One isn't up there.
But interested, very interested, yeah.
Have you talked to these, these elementary schools? Have you talked to any of the elementary schools' principals about AVID at all? Were they interested at all?
Oh, yeah. So Shelley Hatch is our, our district office administrator who oversees and, who oversees AVID and AVID implementation. She has a, a professional learning community group where they go, like they'll go to the, and, and one of the elementary sites and they'll go in, they'll do classroom walkthroughs, they'll talk about what's working well, what ideas can each of the other buildings steal. The same happens at the middle school and the same happens at the high school. So Shelley has done a really nice job in providing district-level leadership. So she is the conduit between the buildings and the district office in terms of need. Our, our building principals are interested. It's, they're interested in balancing priorities. So like, for example, at Pasco High School, they've identified professional learning communities as, and collaboration as their key focus. So to say, "Oh, now we're also going to do AVID and we're going to, and we're going to do this," like Jake, Mr. Stickel, under his leadership, he said, "You know what? All those things are great, but right now we're 100% focused on collaboration because we feel like if we do that one thing really well, then we're going to move the needle. But if we try to do too many things, then we're going to get spread too thin." So like for a Pasco High School, it isn't that they're not interested, it's that right now their priority is collaboration. So like a Pasco High, they may be later in our implementation schedule in that three-to-five-year plan. I think the piece for us, that long-range planning, is to know as a district, when are certain buildings coming onboard and how do we budget appropriately for that so that when we get there, we're ready? And, you know, what can we be doing like in year two to, to kind of sprinkle in those buildings that aren't thinking about coming on until years four or five? You know, you can still have some conversations or kind of, you know, talk the AVID talk to kind of get people excited about it and continue that momentum forward. So having that long-range plan, I think, will be really helpful. I'm not sure I 100% answered your question.
No, no, it's definitely in the right direction, and I agree. I, you know, it seems like we've taken on so much in the past three years with, yeah, the, and three years with new curriculum. And a lot of new leadership and these outrageous outcomes. And I feel like AVID is a great thing to layer in there. Does AVID, but I think it's critical that we, if we do this, we do start even if they're not ready. I can't think that AVID doesn't have something that deals with PLCs.
Yeah, you know, that's a, a super great point. So AVID is a philosophy of every kid, their hopes and dreams, but it's, and it's also a set of strategies that are research-based best practices, that yes, they have the title AVID over them, but you put them on a menu with any other instructional strategy and they're a set of instructional strategies. So for example, you know, writing in the content area is a strategy in AVID. There's, philosophical chairs is a strategy in AVID where you have students kind of debating the content of an article. There's the, they have a WICER strategy that's about really kind of digging into the rigor of content. So all of those can go on a menu of strategies that we would train our teachers on. So you, for example, I just saw a menu for one of our elementary early releases coming up, and when you look at it, it's, you know, all of these different sessions and offerings of which some of them are AVID strategies. So you're exactly right, Amy. The, the AVID schools will be focusing on implementation school-wide, but our trainings would then have menus of offerings that would kind of be, like I said, kind of sprinkling AVID in the organization. So it, I think we'll continue, we've, we're implementing that approach and we'll continue down that pathway.
Have these AVID schools that have implemented AVID with fidelity school-wide rather than just, because I know it's been successful for the students when they do it as an elective, but the ones that have done it school-wide, is there some really clear data that tells that? when they do it as an elective, but the ones that have done it schoolwide, is there some really clear data that tells that these kids are making significant growth above and beyond what their, the expectation was?
Yes, and I, again, Shelley can provide you that data, and that's really kind of where the sweet spot is with Avid, is when you get to the point where the practices and the philosophy and kind of that college-going mindset is institutionalized, schoolwide. That's like, that's the sweet spot. That's what everyone is kind of working toward. And like I said, Shelley would have that data for you. The Avid Center's pretty, pretty good at collecting data. They, they like to have lots of data from us.
Just a question. Out of, are all of these schoolwide, site-wide, or some of these elective?
So, your middle schools, the place where you're going to see the elective is at your middle schools and high schools. And I would say, from my perspective, and Shelley may correct me, and that's totally fine, because I can be wrong. I would say that your middle schools and your high schools are where the schoolwide work really needs to, that would be the sweet spot at the, the, the kind of lever point for your middle schools and high schools is expanding Avid as schoolwide.
So, right now, it's currently elective?
There's an elective. I think you, if you, and I think I, if you went into like McLaughlin, for example, there's lots of Avid stuff everywhere. They have Avid built into kind of their priorities for the year. I think teachers could tell you about Avid. But I think, again, that's the lever at our secondaries is the, the schoolwide. So that, you know, you go into cla, every classroom and a teacher's at least using one or two, you know, Avid strategies. The elementary program is only schoolwide. It, it doesn't have an elective component. And I was just at Longfellow not too long ago, and I walked into one of the, I think it was a fifth-grade classroom, it was upstairs in the left-hand corner, and all of the students had their binder, which is a very important part of Avid about organization and time management. And they all have their binder on the corner of their desk, and so, and you lean down and you ask them, I said, well, what's, what's in your binder? Well, that's where I keep all my schoolwork. Well, why is that important? Well, it helps them be organized. And you open it, and in the front of their binder is a goal-setting sheet, and they can all talk to you about, which is also part of Avid. So, and they can tell you about their goals and why they're setting them and so forth. The goal would be that you could walk into every classroom, at, like, a Longfellow, for example, and every student could tell you, kind of philosophically, you know, what would be appropriate for their grade level in, you know, because certainly that might, that same conversation with a fifth-grader wouldn't be developmentally appropriate for a kindergartner. But for a kindergartner to be able to kind of articulate whatever the Avid appropriate developmental philosophy is at kindergarten. So, that, that's the goal at, like, a, at our elementary schools.
I mean, not to belabor it, but I think elective's kind of a generous term in that you can't just elect it. You're, you're going to get in if you meet certain criteria.
Yeah, that's what they call it as an elective, but Scott's right. There's an application, an interview process, there is criteria. It was designed for students that meet a certain set of criteria. So, he's right. The term elective makes it sound like anyone can elect to be in it. There, there's not, it is, that is not, that is not accurate. However, that's what Avid calls it, is the Avid elective.
Well, what was, I thought, really nice was when we went to the high school in Chihuana, they talked about Avid. And they told all of the students that anyone who wanted to take Avid was welcome to, and this is what Avid helped you do. So, I appreciated that, obviously, I mean, I just went to Chihuana, I don't know anything about New Horizons, but obviously, they're opening it up to more students there and allowing kids to, you know, add it if they want to.
And WSU Tri-Cities is now an Avid site. So, the way that benefits us is our kids who are at Chihuana High School and then go to WSU Tri-Cities, they have that pipeline into that Avid support network. The other way it benefits us is WSU Tri-Cities could offer, could partner with Avid Site to offer some of the professional development and so forth as a, as a university for our teachers. So, there's lots of, I think, potential for opportunity for us as an organization around Avid professional development. I think even more importantly is that pipeline for our kids, and especially our first-generation college-bound students who need some, like, they need to be handed off to someone who's going to help them navigate the world of university. So, that's, that's really, I think, really exciting, that WSU Tri-Cities is now also an Avid site.
An organization is so critical to success, and sometimes that's hard to teach as a parent at home. It's something that really needs to be taught more in the classroom, and you can teach it to an extent. But, you know, having them, okay, take your paper, put it in this section, in this notebook, really helps kids that have trouble focusing, kids with ADHD, that instead of just put it away. I mean, it's just simple things that, that really help kids become more organized. And then, I mean, that's just like a tiny bit.
Well, and if you think about it from a teacher's perspective, and I, you could appreciate this, Amy, especially being at the high school, you see 150 kids a day. If they all had the same organization, where you could go to a binder and know that you're going to have a math tab in there, and every kid's stuff is going to be in the math tab. Like, I mean, just even that from in terms of a teacher perspective, too. So, not only is it the right thing for kids, and it's a great strategy, it's also a, a great tool for teachers to be able to know that, you know, every kid that comes through my door today is going to have a similar organizational structure by where I'll find their, by which I'll find their homework and so forth. So, it just kind of lends some structure to the chaos that can be like lockers and binders and papers and so forth.
They have this whole note-taking strategy, though, and I learned this from the students that, in my class, when I taught at Hampstead High School. Because they've, I had several kids come up to me and say, Mrs. Phillips, can I take notes in this way, rather than the way that you're having us take notes? And I'm like, that would be really powerful for me as a teacher, to know how they're taking notes, so I can teach it in the way that they're taking notes with Avid. So, having that site wide's powerful.
Well, and matter of fact, the notebook, the notepaper I have, that's on my, my, it's, that's the notepaper they use. And they started out being very strict and avid about Cornell notes, and, you know, there's an essential question and how you take notes. And even more important than how you take notes, it's what do you do with the notes afterwards? You know, they teach kids to review them, and they have like a whole thing, like, within a day, you do this with them, and three days, you do that, and seven days, you do this other thing. And so, it's really teaching kids the skill of learning. And I, I'm thinking back to, like, I didn't, no one taught me that. Like, I figured out on my own what worked for me, you know? And I would sit and just recopy my notes. That's how I studied, for hours, just recopying and recopying and rewriting notes. Well, I just didn't know, no one ever taught me how to do that. So, I figured it out on my own. There's a little bit of trial and error with that. So, again, the goal is to have students who are ready to go out, whether it's to college or to career, with some skills and strategies. I think the biggest kind of, and I heard this loud and clear from the school board, and, and I talked to Shelley about this. Avid very much, it, they talk about college and career, college and, or they, college-ready, college-ready, college-ready. And their philosophy is that if you provide every student the tools to go to college, that whatever else they do, they're going to be prepared for, which I don't disagree with that. I think we need to be careful in the language that we use, because you'll hear things like, well, college is the highest standard. So, if you choose not to do that then, so it somehow implies that if I choose to own my own business or get a credential or whatever, that somehow I haven't met the highest standard. And so, I just think we have to be careful in the message that we're sending, which is not a criticism of Avid. It's just about, you know, making sure that we're honoring whatever the hope or dream is that a student has for themselves. And, you know, I'm all about making sure that kids are, are stretching to attain their highest level. But once they've decided what that is, I, our job then is not to judge it or, or to, to rank-order it. It's to support it and believe in it as much as they do for them.
So, for those elementary schools there, if you have the answer now, maybe when Shelley comes, they're all implementing schoolwide to some extent. How much professional development per teacher, per staff member they take to get them there? Is it five hours a year, 10 hours a year, 20 hours a year? And if it's only five hours a year, I understand that you're going to survey people and say, when do you want to start? But that seems pretty minimal, just, just so we have a feeling, kind of a rough, uh, rough.
Yeah, so...
How much it's going to take?
So, the initial PD investment for implementation is pretty significant. So, that's why we need a sustainability plan. They have an Avid Summer Institute every year that you send a cadre and a team of teachers to. Those teachers come back and train. So, it's a pretty rigorous professional development cycle, of which I can get more details. I, I know very vividly, from a building principal's perspective, that it was a pretty heavy lift that first year. And the initial investment between being, you know, paying the licensing fee to be an Avid site, and then the initial professional development training for your steering committee and all of that, is, is the biggest piece of the investment. But then, there's also ongoing required training. And I have to be honest, that's one of the pieces that we're working really hard with Avid Center. And we're really lucky to have Shelley Hatch, because she's a certified Avid trainer. She, she's, like, was picked and trained through Avid, which is not an easy thing to do. Like, not anyone, not just anyone gets to train for Avid. Well, she is an Avid certified trainer. So, we get some benefit as a district from having her here. And then, Mira Goble is another person who's in Walla Walla that's local. So, one of the pieces that we've been pushing back on with Avid is, you know, this has to be, in the long-term, sustainable in terms of funding for us. Like, we can't send teams of 50 people every summer to Florida for Summer Institute. Like, we have to be able to kind of sustain this initiative long-term here locally. So, and they've been good to work with. And so, but it is, it's that first kind of training of the, of the cadre that's the biggest heavy lift, both in terms of time and financial commitment. But I'll have Shelley get you some additional information. You know, what I didn't talk about here, and I, I should have, and I'm really, really remiss in not mentioning it, there's Avid Elementary and Avid Middle School, which we've talked about. There's also a program called Avid Excel. And Avid Excel is a program that's specifically developed for our EL students. And it's an elective, like, it's, it's offered during, for example, the enhancement at the middle school. And, and they, they do a summer bridge. So, the summer, for example, before a student's eighth-grade year, they go into this two-week summer bridge, where they have an opportunity to do a preview of all of the textbooks and learn how to, because these are your, going to be your second language learners, your EL students. They learn how to develop academic vocabulary to support their eighth-grade year. And then, their Avid elective class, their Avid Excel class, is really about helping do all the things I just talked about in terms of note-taking and all of that, but also supporting the students in attaining that high academic language that is sometimes the barrier for our kids. It's not that they can't do the algebra or the geometry, it's that it's a vocabulary issue, and they just need to learn to transition or transfer what they know in Spanish into English, and then they'll fly. It just helps them with the language transfer pieces. So, that's another program that we have that's associated with Avid. The intent is slightly different in terms of approach. It's about developing academic language. I guess the approach is different. The intent is the same, for students to have access to high academic classes. And, and for those kids, they just need some support with academic language, the vocabulary. And how do I read a textbook when English is not my first language? You know, how do I tackle this textbook? You know, what are the strategies I would use to get the information and so on and so forth? So, that's a program that our middle schools have, and they, we implemented that. I was executive director overseeing middle schools, so, meh, again, it's starting to be a while ago now. Uh, probably 13, 2013, 2014, maybe?
I have one more.
Yep.
On the, develop the three-to-five-year sustainable and expansion plan.
Mm-hmm.
I think it means with full implementation, but I might recommend that we add those words, because you could create a three-to-five-year sustainability and expansion plan where people are all over the spectrum for implementation. And I worry that it's hard to implement with fidelity, wanting to start getting too far apart.
Yeah, it's a good point. Yeah, I like that. Yeah. And that's the other beauty of Avid is, and again, this is a little bit the, the benefit of having an external organization who helps monitor your implementation. So, every year, those schools, they have a site team, and they have this tool that outlines all of the key components that have to be in place along a continuum, right? Like, and I don't know what the titles are, but like, emerging, you know, accelerating, mastering, or whatever. And so, you place yourself on this continuum, and you provide evidence to Avid Center about where you're at in implementing. And you do that annually. So, it's like a gigantic board self-assessment, only with definitive pieces of evidence. So, it holds you accountable to that, Scott, what you're talking about is that implementation with fidelity. And then, like, if you're not moving on the continuum, like, the Avid people, they come, they come to your school, and they'll ask you. Like, I had them ask me as a principal, like, you know, and they're nice about it, but it's kind of like, what can we do to help you move this? I noticed you've been here for two years. What can we do to help you move this? So, clearly, clearly, the message is they need you moving along the continuum.
The kids don't want schools to go, well, I have a full plan for sustainability, and expansion plan is going to take me 10 years.
Yes. No, I, I fully understand what you're saying. Yeah.
Thank you so much for the information. I, I think this is a great plan. I really like it. I like the objectives and the, the actions and what kind of the timeline that you've outlined. It seems to me that Avid is a really, a great program that they found was beneficial for a specific group of students and found that it's probably beneficial for all students, and that, it seems there's been an evolution of Avid, where it's like, hey, you know, like Ms. Phillips was mentioning, so many of our students struggle with organization skills, time-management skills, just basic study skills, how do I take notes? These kind of simple, basic life skills that, that really all of our students need, and we've never really formalized how to do that. My oldest will be in high school this fall, and I'm like, I don't know if he can do all this stuff well. He's always done really well in school, but I honestly don't know what his study and note-taking skills, he's always gotten As. But, you know, there's, I think there's really a need for all students. So, the experience that I've had in our district has been positive. Certainly, at the middle school level, at Stevens, a year or two ago, I, I spoke to their Avid group. It was a lar, a huge number of students, it was early in the morning, and, and kind of explained my journey and answered questions. It was really like a, just a fun, exciting, and, and, and then, at one of the elementary schools, I don't remember which one, but one of the teachers showed me, showed me the binder, and this, and the kids were super organized. And again, I thought, at both of those, this is something that all students can benefit from. There's not just a specific subset of students. This is something that most of our students would benefit from. So, I'm really excited about that. I did have a question about, kind of as been mentioned, we, we've had lots of discussion about expansion of dual language, and we're kind of auditing and reevaluating our STEM, STEM programs, and how this, that's going to all fit together with this. Now, as you mentioned, there, there may be kind of a timeline of, of schools that adopt this. And so, maybe some of those would be later down the road, like, like Pasco, you mentioned. But just, could you comment briefly on that and kind of those, where those programs are at, and how this is going to fit into that for those?
Well, I appreciate that you said that, and I think one of the things, and I'll just describe an experience I just had. So, I went in, I walked into Carla Lobos's offices, and she was in her office doing a big planning of what professional development was going to look like. And in the past, you would see, like, an Avid session day, or we're, we're doing GLAD training. Instead, it was, so, for example, literacy training, right? So, the focus of the training is literacy. And then, Avid, these are all of the things that we can train on that has to do with literacy. Here's all of the things we can train on with GLAD that have to do with literacy. So, what we're trying to stop doing is to kind of isolate and say, well, if you're doing STEM, then you're only doing STEM. But you can do a STEM unit and integrate, for example, philosophical chairs, which is an Avid strategy, into a STEM unit, for example. So, what we're trying to kind of stop kind of drawing boxes around things and saying, it's really about a menu of strategies, regardless, that our teachers are trained on, and they can pick and choose what works best for them. So, it's more of an integrated approach to research-based best practices and instructional delivery than what your an Avid classroom, your GLAD classroom, your STEM classroom. So, that's kind of the big, big picture. Now, in terms of, you know, there's lots of things for us to work out around the dual-language expansion. And we can certainly get you details about which schools that's expanding into and how that all is going to flesh out. But that's kind of the broader approach moving forward, is for us to be less siloed in our thinking around instructional delivery. Does that help?
I think that's perfect. I, I think, I would anticipate that that would be pushed back, that, oh, we're a STEM school, and we do this way, and we've come up with this curriculum, these curriculum guides, and we have a grade level, you know, this that we, you know, and then, you want to change that, and, and really, no, it's just kind of, it's all one thing. We're incorporating these important skills, you know, into whatever you're teaching.
Yeah. I mean, if you think about teaching strategies like tools in a toolbox, right? Like, you have a toolbox, and you have a job to do, and you look in your toolbox, and you get the best tool out, you know, for whatever it is. You don't, well, I can't, this is a blue job tool, like, I can only use blue tools on this job. You know, I mean, that's just not even how, like, real life works. And I, I just wanted to comment real quick before I forget, because this is ADHD. But I love the term that you just used around Avid and its evolution, because I will tell you, someone who's been associated either directly or peripherally with Avid for a really long time, I have seen an evolution in their thinking around the Avid elective and what's good for all kids, around kind of expanding this idea of college and career. I've seen an evolution there. An evolution around their willingness to consider a more sustainable funding approach for districts. I think that's really important. So, I've appreciated that Avid really is an organization that does value the voice of the, their experts and the people they're in service to. Every time I've approached Avid with a concern, I've felt heard, and that my, my voice was valued. And I've seen changes in the organization over the last 10, 20 years that I've... valued in, I've seen changes in the organization over the last 10, 20 years that I've been associated with them. So I feel really good about a continued partnership with them.
Yeah, that's great. I appreciate that. I just wanted to echo, I, I, you already mentioned this, I want to second it, because it was certainly one of my concerns, that a lot of the older materials or what I saw kind of when I first was, became a, a school board member was very pushing college. And, and you're right, we have to kind of find this balance between preparing for that, but really supporting each student in, in whatever their desires are and their dreams. And, and so that may not include college, and I think that's a big adjustment for our society and, and public education in general, that that's been pushed for so long that we really need to change that mindset. So I, you already have mentioned that, but I just want to echo that. So, yeah, I'm excited for this. The other concern that I see that, from just talking to teachers that, that would, may come up, is sometimes there is concern that we, in the past, maybe we grab a program and it's, we don't really fully implement it or we don't really, you know, devote ourselves to it and it's kind of just, well, what's the new flavor of the, the week or month? And so we certainly don't want that to happen. We want this, like you said, to be kind of a, a ongoing thing where it's, it's really, we're adding it to the toolbox and not something that we're just going to do for a year and then toss it and jump on the next thing that comes out of Seattle or Boston or wherever that's like the next big thing.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. And what I hope that you hear from us as district staff more, and if you don't, I think you should challenge us as district staff, is that we're planning three to five years out. That it's not, you know, kind of, well, we're trying to get through this year. You know, we need to be thinking more long-term and certainly the details of year five are going to be different than the details of year one, but we need to have our eye farther out on the horizon and be a little more proactive in what do we need to really be thinking in, in year one in preparation for whatever it is that we need to do in year three. So we're really stretching ourselves in, in the organization to do that. It's not something that we've done historically, so it's not comfortable for us, but we're really, that's our, that's our challenge and our goal. And we'll get it right, sometimes I'm sure, and we'll get it wrong, sometimes I'm sure. So we can, as a, as a board and a superintendent, as an organization, partner around kind of challenging and stretching our thinking in that way. I just think it should be the new way we do business.
Okay, so, we've got before us here a list of activities and some target completion dates. And so this is what's going to be our annual objectives, annual plan here. Does anybody have any comments or concerns on any of these, looking at these activities? Looks like the first one, just developing the long-term plan. You'll have that by August of this year.
Yep.
Okay? So that one should be fairly easy to track and identify as complete, the survey of non-Avid schools, and that would be to find out where you can plug them into this plan, right?
Correct.
Support current Avid sites and moving along the implementation continuum defined by Avid. So, what, what does that look like? Is that going to be like a list of activities or not activities maybe, but?
So maybe one of the things I can do to help bring that full circle for the board is bring an artifact from one of our schools that is an actual tool that's filled out annually, so that you can see kind of the process that schools go through annually. Because it's, it's rigorous. Like, you sit down, you look at the rubric, you self-reflect where you are, you collect evidence to reinforce where you're at, and then you build a plan for how you're going to move from where you are on the continuum to the, kind of the next phase on the continuum. And it's not just one layer, like, it's multi-layered. It's, I don't, the document used to be like 34 pages or something, but it's all of the pieces that need to be in place to have a, a robust program. So maybe, like I said, what would lend some clarity for you as a board is just to see the example of one of them. I don't think as a board you want to review every one of them, but I think it would be interesting for you to see at least one.
So these are, I mean, these are ongoing activities.
Yep. Yeah. And each school is going to be in a different spot, all, and I appreciate what Scott's saying, is that, you know, you kind of got to keep them all moving. And, and like I said, Avid Center, we have like an Avid regional person that comes and does, mine used to be Sue Bergman. And like I said, Sue Bergman would say, hey, Michelle, you're in the same spot two years in a row on this. What's your plan for moving the needle? It's like, oh, thanks for bringing that up, Sue.
What about, so the, all of these elementary schools, how long have they been there? What has been the growth within those elementary schools? How, how much of fidelity have they implemented it? How far along are they in that? I mean, that's one concern I have. I love Avid, I think it's fantastic, but if we've already done it and it's already proven not to work, it's a little concern, but I'd love to see what it's done and how it's done.
Yeah.
And in what schools it's been more successful at and what they've done. So, I mean, I think we need to be really aware of all of those things. Do you have some of that data?
I don't today, but we do, and we can certainly build it into one of the board training, where your board champion section, we can build some of those pieces in for you.
I would, I would love that.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And it looks like the next section there is just board development or board education as far as what Avid is. We'll have some training, do some visits, have some of our schools come and do showcases. So do those goals, those objectives, key actions and the timeline look good to everybody as a board? So.
And like I said, think about if you'd like to visit a school when we're out, like, when we go to Bellevue, just think about it and let us know. If you want to, we can arrange it. If not, that's okay too, but just an offer.
Does the Avid tool, it tells you where you are on a continuum?
Mm-hmm.
Does it tell you how, what, how quality of a job you're doing at that point? You know, because there could be five of those schools in the middle as to where they are on their journey through the continuum. But what defines who's, who's successfully using it? Like, is there data that should, can show that? Or is it just, I implement it and good stuff's going to happen and our outrageous outcomes and everything else are going to be good? Like, how do we, how do we ju, not judge, but how do we assess how schools are doing with their?
Again, I think what I need to do is have Shelly show you one. Because I'm, now I'm speaking from what I recall, right? And so the program is different now. But like, when I was principal, we had the rubric out, you had to provide evidence to Avid Center. You couldn't just say, oh yeah, all of my teachers are using Cornell notes. Like, I had to provide evidence and then they had data collection pieces and the Avid site regional person came and met with me and like looked at my stuff and then gave me feedback. Like, you submitted it online. I mean, it was a, it wasn't just a kind of check I did the rubric, it was a legitimate kind of program evaluation annually. Yeah.
So let me take a little deeper in that. Check, six of those seven schools are halfway into the implementation phase, they're all equal in the Avid implementation. Can we pull data to look at how it's helping by how they're improving on certain outrageous outcomes or something else? I don't, you guys can define it, but just how do we assess that it's really moving them?
Yeah, it's a great question. Our data dashboard, which Mark will do a demonstration, I think will help you slice data however you want, Scott. I think the bigger kind of umbrella that we all struggle with in public education is how you narrow down that Avid is the singular factor that's moving that needle. That's the thing that's a challenge in public education, because we do lots of things all at the same time. But the data dashboard should be a robust platform for us to slice data however you want to look at it.
And hopefully the data dashboard isn't just, I mean, it, it will tell us how schools are doing in general. It's, we're not, like you said, it's not going to be, well, because of GLAD or because of Avid.
Right. I think that's, yeah. That's the hard part of, of the work that we do and I, maybe a lot of industries, because you're doing multiple things all at once. You know, it's like, I take a vitamin, I'm on a diet and I'm exercising, I'm not sure which of those three is making me feel better and maybe lose weight. One of them is, you know, and it's hard to quantify which one is more or less, you know? And so, you know, we've got new curriculum materials, we've got PCGs, we've got professional learning communities, we've got Avid, we've got, you know, so it's hard to know, is that needle moving only because of Avid or is that kind of a part of the puzzle or? I think that's the country.
Maybe as part of this board training, you could bring the evidence that says Avid is a great program because, not just because we're doing all these strategies, but doing these strategies has demonstrated that, not just in our district, but I'm sure they have something that says.
Oh, yeah. Yep. And you know, we could benchmark our data up against national data. I mean, there's lots of ways we could slice it, for sure. Yeah. Yeah. I think that's the exciting thing about da, about Avid, is that it is nation, nationwide. It's been around a long time. They have a robust data system. You know, it, it's pretty clear in terms of what you have to do to implement it. They've got great tools for monitoring that. I, I just think it'll be a, really a fun one for you guys to dig into.
Okay.
I think you'll like it.
Is there a way at least to dig into the data around the kids that have had the Avid classrooms compared? Because that's the kind of data that, to me, is really valuable, to find out what this is really like. I mean, I got this, I don't even know where and when, but it has so much data on, on how successful it is nationwide.
Yep.
We've had it in our, in our district. I want to see how successful it's been district-wide.
Sure.
So if there's any way to find.
There's all kinds of ways. Shelly's going to be your gal for that.
Do we have any advocates, Avid advocates among our student reps?
No, I think Avid is a really, is a really great idea, mostly because they want to implement it to all the students, not just, you know, a certain, you know, the elective, which isn't really much of an elective after all. It's, it's a really good idea. One of my questions, though, was that I wanted to ask, is that, once it's implemented into the school, would it be added to just one grade and then just keep it going or would it be implemented to all the schools and not just the individual?
So I believe when Shiahwana implemented, they started with a ninth grade cohort, then moved the ninth grade cohort up and added another, so they just kind of phased it in through the system like that.
Okay.
Doesn't mean you have to implement it that way, I don't think. I guess you could, you know, start a program at every grade level. I think they, Avid recommends that you kind of start that way. You start with a ninth grade, they would move up to 10th grade and so on, so that the students have like a four-year kind of longevity with the program versus starting it in 12th grade and then those, those students leave. I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility to do it that way. I, I, I am recalling that when we implemented it at MAC, we started with, I think, seventh graders the first year, because it was hard to recruit sixth graders anyway. I, I think they recommend you start with one grade level, phase that up and then bring in a new cohort.
Which makes, to me, that makes a little more sense if it's an elective. If it's not an elective and you're training teachers to do it, they often teach more than one, one grade level.
Well, and the way that, the way that you, so Avid school-wide, it, you know, you train people up on the philosophy, there's kind of a bank of strategies, and you may pick two or three of the strategies that you commit to as a whole. So for example, again, I'm talking like back in the day now, we, we started out with the notebook and Cornell notes. Those were the two things. And we made a commitment, McGlothlin-wide, that every kid was going to have a notebook and we were all going to do note-taking the same way.